Yeah, and well, and it's through, he's blocked it off, but it's, it is a through to connect to twenty-five fifty.
Well, once upon a time, that lined up with where it went into the home park. And so it was possible to put light there.
And then Dee screwed it all up and got the light, yeah. And then all three of them lined up. Screwed the whole thing up, yeah.
So our answer to that is-
It wasn't on UDOT's radar to be lined up with anything, so it wasn't, you know.
Right, but it did fit within their, you know how they like to measure things like light, light, light?
Yeah.
They did like the other spot by, I'll call it the Burger King.
Yeah.
The Burger, they didn't like that because it was too close to real one. It's not too close, I've seen closer ones, but they like to-
Like the one under the interchange?
Oh, that whole cluster.
Like, did, 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 yeah. Okay, well, I'm curious, like, because Orlov might want to come in and talk about some of that, because-
And maybe he'd be interested in how that could all be.
Well, he is, because that affects his other laws under there.
That's what I, that's what I-
I put shell in those marks.
Not negatively, I think, because she has a couple people that might want those laws to be-
No, I bet for, I actually-
Exactly, where the road's gonna be.
I actually prefer the word must. It's not shell, it's more of a location.
Any being on the road's gonna help so much stuff, because that means associated, um-
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Old Dominion, we can just go out to that light center all the way down.
I don't know, I can understand.
Or a condition here.
Lyle leaves this one anyway. Yeah, it's charged.
Harged and in charge.
Harged and in charge.
You better get there, somebody better get somebody something.
I know, yeah, are we live?
Don't get that, if you think about the word shell in a different way, you could say, we will-
That's controlled.
Okay, where's that voice? Okay, hold on.
Sorry.
It's okay, it's okay.
We're talking about that one.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for everyone that did show up, I'm sure there's someone like this thing. Um, Lyle's gonna run this one, so let's start with, so really the goal is just M1, and then we'll go into our C2 and kind of try to wrap those up, because we got some big agenda items coming up. So it'd be nice to get done with. That's okay. Well, but, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If I trip up, Janita has to fix me, I mean, help me. Okay, we, we're gonna start with the M1, because this is the smallest one.
Yes.
Okay.
And it should be pretty-
Everything looks good, except Greg's changes on, uh-
And that's- It was, it was actually an unfinished edit.
Oh, okay.
The way he ended up was the way I edited, and when I sent it out to you guys, I-
Because it says, well, it said, it said, "All areas not covered by landscape or payment shall, shall control the dust and weeds." But, I rewrote it to read, "Dust and weeds shall be controlled in any areas not covered by landscape or payment."
See, the area doesn't control weeds.
It does.
It doesn't.
And that's why, so, oh, do I need to give that to you, Greg? Or did you have it?
So did you make those-
Whoever's gonna submit the, the final call.
Yeah, I was gonna say, did you make the-
Just take that.
I'll take this, I'll put it in.
Okay.
And send it to you.
I think it's a done deal.
And then whoever makes- Whoever makes the motion tonight, it's accepted or whatever, needs to, yeah, just add that exception in.
Okay.
Okay, that's easy then.
Okay.
Everyone else-
Starting with, um-
About M1? A year-long process.
You guys, man.
Yeah, but the C2 should reflect and should be-
Yeah.
That has its own character.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's start at the, let's start at the top. I compared this document to what's online, and of course, this is a more of an exploded detailed view.
Did I send out the C2? Do you guys have any copies of that?
You guys should have copies.
Okay.
I got it, I mean, that's where I ended up with it.
Let me forward it to you guys, and just so you know that.
I'm, I'm kinda confused.
I'm going off the amended version.
Because this is part of commercial.
Okay, now, this is commercial.
It is.
What Greg has done is taken our list and expanded it enormously to include the world, and then contracted it to make it more manageable, is that, and that's it.
Basically, what I did, is I took the big list, and said, okay, what do we want from home want, in commercial? But then, based off of everybody's discussion, brought it down more, it was still a big list that nobody was really happy with. So I went through and decided on my last, but I sent you in Geneva. Basically, if we identify those items as retail, which is what we wanted in commercial anyway, it reduces it down substantially, to almost nothing.
And that's exactly what's, so, I don't know how much you've invested in time, I went through every line of this.
Yeah, I did too.
And, and maybe, what I'd suggest is we kind of go through, and the, by the way, kudos for you for taking Goliath and making it palatable, okay? And, and, no, the vast majority was taking retail that was listed in a hundred and one different ways, and just saying retail, and ending it.
Exactly.
But, I've got edits, but what I would like to do is just comment on a few, but I would like to hear the views of people on. And any, and as we go down the list, if there was any that you had heartburn, why is it included? Why was it excluded? That would be the purpose of this exercise, so the next time we sit down in the work session, we're looking at a shorter list. And we'll still groom it one more time, but we're not gonna, all these things that have lines through them won't be on the next list.
But, will they be implied?
No, no, they're gone, they're gone.
Yeah. The reason they have the lines through them, is because when I went back through, those all, everything with the line through is now considered retail.
Okay, okay, that's what I, okay, that's what I thought, but I, I needed some clarification.
No, no, and, and it's, it's, it's very apparent to me that's what you were doing.
And anything that's not crossed out is subject to, um, site plan-
No, 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 there's still a permitted list, there's still a conditional use list.
Right.
What you're gonna look at is, when we emerge tonight, we've got a tentative list.
Yes, okay.
That will be reviewed one more time for permitted and conditioned.
Okay, that makes sense.
So, if there's anything with the line through it that you have heartburn about losing, now's the time to talk about it, because it won't be on your next list, that's the idea. And there may be a few that he's got on the list that you want to say, "Let's talk about it," and we'll modify that, so. So we'll pare it down to something that's a lot more manageable.
I didn't read my laptop.
Okay, that, the first page, I don't have anything, everything that was crossed out to me was, uh-
Acceptable.
Was okay, okay?
What's the rationale again for getting rid of air conditioning and all that stuff?
It's my question, because we've encompassed it in something else.
Should that be in the M1?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you question any of these, if, if there's anyone with the line through it that bothers you, we ought to talk about.
Okay.
So you're, you're getting rid of everything that's retail sale on there?
But it's because there will be a retail sale line, in fact, he's put it in bold print, just so you could see it. But, so, but if you think there's a unique version of retail that needs to be stated by itself, that's why we would, that's where we would do it.
I consider it, well, I guess I'm jumping ahead.
Anything else on that first line, on that first page? Okay. Second.
Barber shop?
Okay.
Retail sales, because it's not a pro, it's, yeah.
The, the one I would, you know where you've got cafe or cafeteria?
But it's not a good you're buying. The only, I guess, yeah, to retail is like you come in and buy something.
You buy?
Where hair, yeah.
It's a service.
Hair is more of a service.
There's this, there's, make, I think we ought to make a distinction between service and retail sales.
We do retail sales and service?
Retail sales, yeah, retail sales and service.
Because bicycle sales-
You could, depends on how well you want to pair this thing down.
I know.
Bicycle I'm fine with, but at the barber shop, I'm a little-
You're not coming away with an item, so it's service.
Right. But if I, if I owned, if I owned a barber shop and I was looking at our ordinance to say, "Gosh, do I fit in this?", I would not consider myself a retail sale.
So we can put barber shop back in, one of them, permitted or conditional?
Permitted.
Permitted, okay, you got, you taking notes?
No.
I will.
Okay, you're taking notes, okay?
They're on there.
They're on there already. Is that in permitted?
They changed the color.
Why don't you put both of those together, barber shop or salon slash, or salon slash barber shop? I mean, why have two lines there? Okay, so there we go.
It's one of the same, yep, I got salon slash barber shop, permitted.
Do you want just a generic service, or a service, or a thing, so it's not just barber shop, so there can be other companies that are like that, where you mostly buy-
Didn't we attack that last time, because you have like, an aesthetics thing too, because you have lashes and eyebrows and nails and all those things?
Wouldn't that be under salon?
Yeah.
Botox, botox is another, seriously, Mike Mees does it in her home.
We want something that's a bit more generic, say, hey, services.
Services is too broad, that's a, that could be a lot.
Esthetician is what they're called.
That could be a chiropractor.
Guy, though.
Esthetician.
Because a salon, person that cuts your hair isn't an esthetician.
Oh, no, esthetician is where they-
Greg always goes down, Greg always goes down that hill.
Okay, okay, focus, the next one, uh, what about bicycle sales?
That's retail.
Retail, it should be retail.
Now, under cafe or cafeteria, we deleted the word restaurant, I would prefer putting restaurant here.
Okay.
Just put restaurant.
Cafe, cafeteria.
Restaurant slash cafe or cafeteria.
Isn't restaurant-
Hospitals.
I was thinking of the Davis School District.
Yeah.
They have their big school district office out there, and inside of it, they have a cafeteria.
Oh, and, yeah.
And they make muffins and bread and stuff.
And send them out to the schools.
So just, can we do-
How about?
Restaurant or cafe?
I would put cafe slash restaurant or cafeteria, okay, how about that, guys?
Okay, I've just got restaurant slash cafe.
Call center I would probably put back in. Just because it's, yeah, and those are, those, those are true, because a lot of banks, credit unions, they have true call services.
Yeah, they do, yeah.
You know, not just-
Camera store.
That's retail all the way.
Car wash is a service.
Carbonated water sales.
China crystal and silver shop, as a standalone.
Well, it could be, so that could probably be a retail.
Retail sales, take it out.
So I would delete that.
Retail, let's see.
Just delete it.
Just cross it out. Now, isn't the car wash considered a service?
Car wash is-
That's specific, though, I think-
They say leave car, leave car wash on there.
Shouldn't car wash be a condit, well, shouldn't it be in something that we are seeing? And not necessarily permitted?
We might want to put it on a-
Because remember, this is C2.
Well, they're cycling a lot of water.
But if you're doing a gas station, which, wouldn't have a car wash, you see the sign right there?
Well, yeah, but what happens if they don't have a gas station, this one over here is not gonna have a gas station.
That's what I was just gonna say.
Yeah, no, I, so we made, we made gas station conditional? Gas station, gas station is it?
Where is it?
In the G's.
It's not, it's gotta be in the permitted use or conditional, I mean.
Because I would put-
I don't see it in here.
Yeah, that's one that-
It's not on here. Oh, service in the S's, oh.
See, we deleted, we deleted car wash from conditional and put it in permitted.
Okay, there's, there's not a-
So I think maybe we ought to reinstate that.
I think it needs to go in conditional.
Car, car wash conditional?
Because I want to see, because you, I mean, with a car wash, you have two things, you have flow of traffic and you have the implementation, or a lot, the impact, I guess, the impact of traffic.
Water, suds, uh, I mean, they're-
Not even that, it's more of like, those things produce a lot of traffic at times, and where are their entrances and exits?
Placement of a car wash ought to be something we think about.
Okay, sorry, we're back to-
No, we did, we did delete the China crystal silver shop.
I, I crossed it out.
Okay, that's retail.
I don't know what communication buildings are.
Medical dials.
It's like a phone company.
I'm fine with that.
As a permitted use.
You're gonna have your cell tower.
Wouldn't a cell tower be under conditional? And then you, and then this communications building would be next to that, under conditional.
Well, yeah, and don't, you do have the cell tower under, uh, conditional, don't you?
I believe so.
Why do we even-
What's a communication building?
It's just a little service building on the side of the tower.
No, but would it, but is it ever a standalone thing?
No.
Then why not just delete it?
You could just delete it, yes.
Just delete the whole thing?
Yeah, just cross it.
I personally, I would like to put diaper services, including cleaning, back in. Where did you even get that?
Those that still use cloth diapers. They are, I know, because of environmental issues, they're, they're like, coming back, you're gonna have the diaper pails and the-
Like police FBI, something, or? Oh, okay, I'm fine with that. Driving range indoors, we have twice, because you have driving, oh no, archery and range.
No, I'm gonna talk about that, because that, to me, there's an inconsistency where we miss some of the indoor stuff and not-
I'm trying to figure out what it means by driving range.
Golf driving range, indoor golf driving range.
Yeah, I was thinking, yeah.
Tutoring centers, perfect.
I'd put a golf driving, I'd put golf on there, so people don't think you're doing, uh- Like you're-
Add, so drive, so-
Just golf.
Did you have an indoor driver's ed range?
Oh, so I put, okay, golf driving range.
Fifty thousand foot building that they're-
I was, I was thinking of a driving range, you know, like a little-
That's, that's why-
A little go-kart place.
That's what I was thinking too, okay? Educational institution.
So I'm curious, during this conversation, is there a reason why we're getting so detailed on each and every possible type of business?
Well, no, what we did is, in Greg's effort to help, so he put, he compiled, I asked him to compile all, everything from the surrounding cities, so he threw everything that they, every city had into this, and we decided to do process of elimination. So we eliminate, if you look at our thing, we've crossed out, and we're just making sure what we've crossed out falls into something else, and that we're okay that it's crossed out.
So we pared it down from like a thousand things, to just, uh-
I'm just wondering why-
Just a hundred, just like a hundred things, and now we're bringing it down there.
And this is an attempt to try to eliminate a lot of that.
Okay, and so if somebody comes in with something that we didn't think of, what do we do, add it?
No, no, we've created the subcategories.
We've got some broad categories that things can fall into.
A lot of the stuff I put in retail sales, we can also create a service section on it, that, which is what you want in your commercials on. You don't want a bombing manufacturing company there.
Well, and that's why we did it this way, to make sure that if we, someone was to come in with diaper sales, we knew where it could go.
Okay, I, I was just curious, because it looked like a very extensive list, like, how?
Yeah, no, it was intentional.
But it wasn't, he did, he wasn't on drugs when he made the list.
Other cities, yeah.
What we've done is taken the big list and distilled down into something manageable.
Okay, employment-
A diaper cleaning service, he might have been on drugs when he put that one in.
Yeah, that one is, he's out there on the limb away.
Okay, educational, educational institution, tutoring, and so forth. Okay, employment agency? Okay, government buildings?
You deleted, uh, health club, is there a reason for that?
Because we have it up above.
Where?
Uh, athletic club.
Huh?
Athletic club.
There's an athletic club above.
You want a new athletic slash health club?
Yeah, you could do that.
Well, let, do that.
Do that, athletic slash health.
Yeah, do that.
Okay.
That's a good thing.
Athletic slash health.
I was trying to be far west city, and what was this?
Slash, yeah.
The gym.
For a floor of fruit.
I don't really get house cleaning.
Garden.
House cleaning, you'd, it's, roam around.
My house, like, they're going to something.
Would that, how often would that actually be a standalone building?
It still can be a service.
It wouldn't be.
Residential business.
It'd be a residential business.
I, I don't-
No, it's not even residential, they could have, they could have a, a place, but why would that still not be service?
What, what are we talking about?
Uh, house cleaning.
And thorough cleanings.
Oh.
Oh, you're right, like Service Master, it seems, okay.
Can't we just do a broad category, do retail sales and then service sales, or service, service businesses?
Retail sales and-
Well, no, do one category, retail sales, then we need to come up with another category that would fall under service-oriented sales. Thorough clean would be a service, a retail.
Service, that's a bit vague, that covers a very broad sweep. Retail sales, as you go in, there's, there's a product, you buy it, I mean-
So what would you consider like, the HVAC company or thorough clean, what would you consider them?
HVAC is a air conditioning company that-
Yeah, but they do service, they do repair. Yeah, so how do you, and they don't, no one really comes into theirs to buy things.
Is there anything-
Well, not to like, take off the shelves and buy.
That you would feel nervous about, and Will, obviously, we haven't thought of the universal.
Just the one that Greg mentioned earlier.
So is there, a more general term that you could do?
We can do that in an order, in a zoning order.
Why can't you do-
They already have that one in there.
Give his home address and say, "This is the only place in far west where it's zoned."
Why can't you do, hold on, focus, hey, focus. Can't, why can't we do sales and service-oriented businesses? Something like that, sales and service.
I don't have a problem with, service is very broad.
But it, it goes hand in hand with most sales.
Here's, are there, any service that you want to, that you think we need to name specifically? If not, then that's a good idea.
Sales and service, I mean, if you look at air conditioning units, and you look at house cleaning, thorough cleaning, those guys, you know, they're selling a product and they provide a service.
Right.
So, take out these retail.
Selling a product, yeah, but they're still, they would still, in my eyes, fall under sales and service.
But if it was like somebody's smaller, just house cleaning company, for example, that's not a big-
All they need is a business license.
So really, we have three categories, we have sales, we have service, we have sales and service.
One person talking at a time.
Just running out of their home, because they got too much going on, and it would create too much traffic in the neighborhood. And they needed a place like this to be, like, why would we care that they're there rather than, um-
Out of their home.
I know, I disagree with you, but they're selling a service, so consider retail.
But, but the reality is, what's, what service do you need to single out?
Well, like carpet-
Decision, we're not gonna single out a particular retail, we're gonna lump it, so what service you, makes you nervous enough, you want to spade it specifically?
I agree, okay. But if you, but if you think house cleaning is, to me, somebody going to the neighbors, you know, going to your house and cleaning, okay?
That doesn't mean that they don't have an office.
That's true, but thorough clean are carpet cleaners, okay? But, the house cleaners, yeah, but house cleaners, they go out and wipe down fridges and clean up, there's a difference there.
But no, but not, because this is related to where they're housing their business, so it's related to where their office is essentially.
Like I say, if you had a small office, I could see that, yeah, but a lot of the house cleaners, at least the ones that I'm aware of, operate out of their homes.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so then, just take it off, if that's the case, because they're not falling under this ordinance.
Okay, deleting, so-
Yeah, but they're not falling under a C2 ordinance.
But, but the-
Okay, deleting.
But if you had-
No, don't delete it.
I think there may be an advantage in putting retail sales and, or service, because a lot of the retail sales have service.
Right.
And if we're making a distinction between the two, then we, then there, we got a two-pronged thing we have to worry about, so-
So let's do retail sales and service.
Which is important, because if you look at, for example, Daisy Mates, okay, they may have a small office.
What is Daisy Mates?
House cleaning service.
Hey, I've got a great cleaning lady, and she does not work for Daisy Mates, okay? Yeah.
It's a house cleaning service, they come out and they clean your house, uh, they may have a small office.
And those franchise-like companies are gonna have a small location.
Cleaning products there, and, you know, all the stuff there, so I could see the need for that.
Why don't we just do retail sales and service?
And we don't have any problem with making that permitted, okay, we don't see any red flags.
No, no, because the chemicals they have there are household products anyway.
Okay, so retail sales and service, where do I put that?
Well, there will be, it's, there's retail, where's the retail part?
Well, just wait till we, wait till we get down there.
Retail sales.
Cross out house cleaning, yeah.
I'll keep house cleaning on, right?
No, cross it out.
You'll have to cross that.
We'll put it, we'll put it later.
Okay, insurance agency?
Once again, retail service, I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to leaving that one in there.
Not either.
Because that is very specific. And that's what mostly you're gonna get in your office complex, you're gonna get title, service, you know? Yep, insurance.
Decorator and designing establishment.
Oh, I feel like I can go, that's a sales and service.
Cross it out.
Now, before you change that page, uh, you've crossed out laboratory, dental, and medical.
That falls under clinic and medical.
You're putting that in conditional, but clinics you're not, help me understand.
I thought we were deleting it because it's already medical clinics.
No, a, a laboratory is a different thing.
It's like a-
There's a lot of clinics and hospitals that send their stuff out to a lab, so it's, it's a different entity.
Testing lab, or a place where you stand-
Or a dental, they'll send for, for implants, the caps or all that, so, no, it's, that's, my question is, why delete it here if we're allowing the medical and dental in permitted?
Because this is a laboratory.
Our problem is, most clinics have some sort of lab component.
So you're worried about chemicals, so you-
Well, hospital clinics and stuff like that, do, yes.
But like Ogden Clinic has a lab inside.
Yeah, they do.
A lot of them have standalone, a lot of dental places send it to a dental lab.
Or dentals, or I, all these, they have, most of them have-
And that's my problem, you, you're permitting dental in clinics, but you're making this conditional.
Right.
I didn't know it was in conditionally, so I, I'm fine taking that out. It's now in permitted, but if you think about, you know-
Well, no, it isn't, it's got a line through it.
Well, it's not, I took it out, you're making a good argument.
You took it out, it's right here.
I know, I'm just saying, I took it out, but you're making a good argument.
I think we ought to put it in.
So, okay, I will change this and put permitted.
Oh, because now that I'm thinking about it, you think about, you go in for a medical procedure, and they take a biopsy, they're gonna send that out somewhere.
Or blood samples, or whatever, I mean, it goes on and on, you know?
So I'll take off the line and put permitted.
Okay.
Okay, line is deleted, laundrette or laundromat?
I don't know what a laundrette is, but laundrette.
Could we just say laundromat?
I don't, Geneva.
Laundrette sounds like it's a little binky thing with a hat, with a washing machine or something.
Just women washers? Let's just do laundromat.
I don't know what it means either.
Let's just make laundromat. Okay, laundrette's where they wash diapers.
Okay, legal office.
I, I think, I don't see any why, reason why legal office can't be included under office.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, so that, that just disappears.
Okay, so- So delete this one?
Yeah.
Okay, delete it, library, public library?
Yeah.
Okay, mortuary?
Okay, now, we decided-
A far west city cemetery, a mortuary would be nice, which office would be nice to have, too.
A mortuary office?
From the cemetery.
That'd be this sexton.
Yeah, down by South Academy.
Did it ever actually function?
Well, that used to be, yeah, that's true, I remember that.
That's why it looks that way, because it has the columns in front of it?
I don't know if they ever had any, any-[1686.51]
Okay, guys, we gotta stay focused, let's go.
Okay. Okay, museum?
Okay, before you get to that.
Yes, sorry.
Now, we, we have made a conscious decision to completely eliminate light indoor manufacturing and associated retail sales.
We just threw it into conditional.
No, it's not there.
Oh. Okay, I thought we threw that into conditional.
No, that's the reason for my question right now.
Well, light manufacturing.
Did we change the verbiage of it maybe?
We could, retail sales and light manufacturing, I don't know.
No, no, there was, what we, warehousing and retail sales.
Maybe that's, okay.
That's the one that, that, and I want to go over our former list, because there's a few things that disappeared.
I would like to, I was gonna say, I would like to add light, I thought we added light indoor manufacturing to conditional, and I would like to leave that in conditional.
Okay, so move that to conditional.
Yeah.
Okay.
Linen locksmith.
Okay, uh, anyone else have heartburn up until the museum?
Nope.
Okay.
D luggage store for whatever reason.
Skipping down?
I mean, I don't know how often you visit the.
Okay, skipping down, office? Okay, we're down, we're down at the office, okay? Yeah, I need to add a few things, because, oh, I've already got them.
How come we just can't classify general office? Just take out, because then we go in property management, investment firms and advertising agency, yeah, general office. No, I, I'm not critiquing you, I love the world, I like it.
That list isn't inclusive.
Yeah.
So, because, and we just added legal to the list.
General office, and we took out legal office, we might as well take out insurance agency then, because that's office.
I, I, I agree with you too.
Okay, let me cross it out.
Let's just make general office.
General office, perfect.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So I don't have to put those down there, because it's just implied.
So that's going to be shortened up a lot, all that blah, blah, blah.
Take out optometrist and all that, because that falls under your medical clinic and office.
Okay, uh, personal care, fitness.
Oh, this is where we put it all, personal care and fitness, barber shop, no, there's, why, that's still, we, didn't we decide that could be retail sales and service?
It says service, yeah, all right, so, okay, so I'll delete, I'll delete this up here. Well, yeah, permitted, I'll delete this and leave these down here, okay?
I don't know.
What I meant is, this one here, we had, we had a salon, and this is all implied.
Okay, I just got the condition use piece.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we're, we're still on that page, right?
Yeah, we're.
Okay, we drawn a line through pet grooming, uh, that was deleted.
Sales service.
Sales service.
I would still put that under.
So we're, okay, no problem, I just say.
And you could do.
I don't have any problem with keeping that somewhere.
Clinic, medical, animal hospital, you know what I mean?
Well, the animal hospital is a little bit different.
Animal hospital, I'd say that's not clinic.
A veterinarian center, there isn't there vet something here?
I don't think so.
But I think that ought to be separate from human medical and dental.
Oh, I agree.
So we can make, we can do an animal hospital.
Make sure we.
Yeah, pet service.
That's something I would put in conditional. Wouldn't you put that under conditional?
Animal? No, why? If we're allowing clinics, what animal?
Animal hospitals can include horses, elephants.
No, because the original.
Medical clinics can include six hundred pound people. I mean, what's the difference?
Retract that.
No, I don't want to retract that.
Here, here's what I did.
I'd rather deal with horses than humans.
On the original versions of the C two, I put down an animal hospital.
Yeah.
Subject to the medium and small animals.
Restricted to.
Right.
Yeah, if it's subject to, they're the ones that controlling the hospital.
And making large animal unconditional?
Medium and small.
Why? But we have a, we have a, well, we have an animal hospital right over here.
But don't you want, wouldn't you want that conditional?
No, we're talking parking and we're talking most of it being inside.
That's true, but if you're talking large animals.
If you restrict it to smaller animals, I have no problem, if they're dealing with cows and horses, I do have a problem.
They'd have to be in a different.
So you're gonna be, you're gonna be stapling horses and cows.
A lot of times they will, how is the animals? And they, when you start getting big animals, they're not inside the building.
No, no, that's true.
That's better.
That's the reason.
That's better in a.
And that would be more like in a, in one or something.
Or even in an agriculture.
I would want it in an M one, but it would need to be, I can see this now, because you would want to see the site plan of where they're housing the horses and the cow overnight, okay.
Because some of it would not be necessarily inside.
In the draft, it's supposed to be, if you have large animals for veterinary, it's going to then.
That's true.
But, case in point, there is a large animal clinic right down the road from here.
And the distinction between that and the clinic, which is housing a six hundred pound human, is that six hundred pound human would still be inside the building.
Yeah, you make a good point, I didn't, I got it, I got you. I was not, that was not directed at you.
I know you did.
Oh, I'm like, that's not, I'm just saying you can have as loud of humans and.
We're in agreement, that would be under conditional, right?
So let's say, small and medium animal related services to be can, or non, permitted, and then large animal services to be conditional.
Well, that's, that's in the conditional right here, veterinary.
What does it say?
It says, small and medium animals with kennel services.
Is permitted?
Well, it's crossed out, it's conditional.
I'll, I'll have.
Wait a minute, it's crossed out in the conditional.
Well, we're trying to, because it's a retail service.
Oh, duh, okay.
That's why I crossed it out.
I would make that one specific, I would put that, yeah, so I would put that back in.
We're both are permitted right now.
No, I, we'll, yeah, let's, we'll work there, okay.
Can I just?
Yes.
I worked on the, the ordinance, the, how many animals people are allowed to have.
Oh, yeah.
And we got into a lot of trouble with defining large and small animals.
But with vets, it's pretty, it's pretty, I would say.
I would put an EG after large.
Okay, okay, because most large animals.
Cow or cattle or whatever.
Most large animal vets don't do small animals.
No, they don't.
And that's the good, that's, there will be a dichotomy.
They're the ones that go out on.
Most of the time, they go out and service them and do.
And your dog vets don't do horses and cows.
Okay, so we'll cross that between we get there, okay, we got photo studio on the top of the next page, um, racket club.
Now, isn't that a service? Studio of the service.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so do I cross that out and move it?
No, just cross it out.
Just cross it out?
Hey, hold on, one up pharmacy, why don't you do medical clinic, doctor office slash pharmacy? Because that's a specific that I can see someone coming in and say, hey, I'm a pharmacist.
Okay, so doctor office.
And that's not, I wouldn't consider that essentially office, because they're producing something, dispensary.
Okay, so add doctor office pharmacy to that line, right?
Yeah.
And cross it out to make it consistent with everything else.
Yeah, make, yeah, make sure that it's, and if you got doctor's office, that shouldn't be separate from clinics.
Well.
So that, we've got to consolidate that into one line.
Where's doctor's office?
No, you just did, you just put it down.
We were, I was told to add the doctor office and pharmacy on that bottom line.
Oh, not doctor's office, I don't care about that.
Clinic.
Yeah, clinic can fall in.
I put a medical clinic and then pharmacy.
Okay. Okay, where should I put that?
Well, you got clinics, I don't care, it depends on which word you lead off with, but you've got clinics, medical or dental.
Oh, you know what?
And it should be medical or dental clinic slash pharmacy.
Slash pharmacy.
How about that? So medical or dental clinic slash pharmacy, how about that?
Yeah, right there, is that what you want?
Whatever you.
I just don't want to screw this up and you guys have to fix it.
Well, you'll send out an.
I will, I'll revise it and send it out, yes.
Then racket club, I don't know why we need that, just put, that'll fall in fitness.
I was thinking of the one that's down over there.
You're thinking like pickleball, like the pick.
Well, but you list some of the other stuff, like, uh, indoor driving ranges, uh.
When we took that up, uh, no, we, did we take that up?
No, it's in there.
Driving range.
Yeah, I put golf in front of it.
I just feel like racket club really fits in fitness, gymnasium. Yeah, it's in.
Okay, uh.
So you're gonna, you're gonna.
I'm sixes, I don't care, whatever you guys.
Let's just leave it.
Like racket club is very specific.
Well, and we're going to get another.
We'll get another.
When we just.
Can we do like fitness slash gymnasium or fitness slash something?
I don't see why not, well, but that, that would go under athletics then.
Athletics, health, fitness.
Health, fitness, racket?
Racket.
Okay, health, fitness.
Pickleball.
Yeah.
Tennis.
I'm great with that.
Fitness center, how's that?
There you go.
That covers it all.
Okay, okay, next one, uh, residential facility?
That's mandated, but you don't touch that one.
No.
Or the second one, restaurant, why do we take it out, we want to know, is it conditional?
No.
Put that up with.
It's, no, we put cafe, we put a cafe slash restaurant slash cafe, so that one's taken care of.
Yeah, we already moved that.
Are we changing retail, retail sales establishment to, uh?
Retail, sales and service.
Retail, retail and, retail, so, yeah.
You can be changed to.
Let's do retail and sales, so they can be interchangeable, or retail slash.
Retail, sales.
Retail and sales.
Slash.
Services.
Because it's an and or.
Okay, retail slash sales establishment.
Yeah.
Okay, any heartburn on there, we got travel agency?
Probably go to office.
Where do, I don't even see travels agency.
Right at the bottom of the page.
That would be.
That's office.
Why couldn't that be office?
Yeah, it could be office.
Because they're, they're sitting at a desk showing pictures of.
I like to put shoe store back in.
Yeah.
Hey, then I'm going to cross that out and it'll be implied under office, okay, I'm going to just delete that.
Yeah.
Vegetable store.
Tacos, that's not a vegetable.
The thing you gotta be careful of is the state hospital, you put one in your front yard.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it is.
Store or stand, which is funny.
Yeah.
Okay, so that wraps up all the permitted.
Well, that, the vegetable store or stand will technically subdue ordinance.
Well.
It's funny that these are.
I know, but why keep it if it's, if, if it's.
No, I don't want to keep it, I'm just laughing at him, yeah.
So do I delete, so anything's crossed out, I'll delete it.
It's already, it's already.
Unless we've changed it, is this over your head, Lyle?
No.
Okay, you got it.
So.
Yeah, you've been.
Trying, yes.
Anything that already has a cross line through it, you can delete it.
Yes, anything with.
So the thing that I edit, all those, those lines through them aren't on that listing.
Okay.
And you cleaned this up without error.
I'll clean that up and then I'll send it out.
Okay, we're in condition, right? The first one, I, I, I've got some more, I've got much more stuff, what is an amusement enterprise?
Like the one up in the building, up in, uh.
Rush Fund Center.
Rush. The one down.
Classic Fund Center.
So you all, except this old person, this, you don't have any question what that means?
Roller skating.
It's kind of, it's kind of like the junction where they've got bowling, they've got the, the water.
That would you would look under when you.
No, I actually thought this was a diaper cleaner.
To me, to me, amusement would be like.
He's doing it or something, and I was questioning why we're talking about it.
The, the enterprises is what gets me.
Okay, as long as you know what the, that means.
Okay, what if I change it to amusement slash fund centers?
Yeah, that would make it a little bit, okay?
Yeah.
Amusement.
What makes a center fun?
I know, exactly, it's not fun for me, it's fun for my kid, but.
Definition of a fun center.
For somebody.
I'll let you put it in, but that still bothers me, is being extremely vague.
Okay, action establishment.
Leave it there, we can talk about it next time.
Well, I'll add fund centers to it.
I'm asking the same question, action establishment.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking indoor paintball, indoor laser tag, things like that, like axe throwing, social axe throwing, things like that.
Now, that's what you think.
No.
Yeah, rooms.
But the next person that comes in, he says, this is what I propose, there's lots of action, and you haven't thought of it, that's the whole reason we're creating this list.
Under amusement fund centers to me.
I would not, I don't like that one at all.
I don't like action.
Let's delete it and just call it, put it in here under the amusement fund center, because you're doing it to bust things up, yeah, it is. Okay, so that will be deleted.
Okay, the, the one that you've got on automobile repair, I went back to our old one, which had some stated restrictions in it.
We don't allow any automotive sales in C two?
It, it, the, the, the old one said not to include restoration, salvage or storage. I kind of liked that word in our old, our old version. The old version said minor automobile repair and detailing service, not to include restoration, salvage, storage or major repair of any kind. There's, there's some clarity in that language, the former language I really like, this is a list. I'm, I'm wondering if we could, I do like particularly the fact that it, we tell them it can't include restoration, salvage or storage. That's what we had orig, that's what we had in our original.
Yeah, and there was a company that just barely left here.
And given our history in recent past, so is there a way of blending some of this, not to include as part of this, do you understand what I'm saying? See, go back to the original.
We can just use the original.
Okay.
I kind of like the original, the original is minor automo, automotive repair and detailing service, and then not to include restoration, salvage, storage or major. I, I, I like that one.
Yeah, I'm sure. No, I'm worried this is not directed at you.
Okay, I'm just going to replace this with the original ordinance, okay? Batting cages, indoors, outdoors, yes, I'm sorry.
Automobile new, used, sales service, is that because we're assuming that's allowed in permitted or?
No, I'm thinking, are we saying?
These are in conditional.
Yeah, but I'm saying it's not impermitted, so are we assuming it's only an M one?
No, it's in a C two conditional.
But it's not, it's crossed out.
Crossed out here right now.
What's crossed out of you?
New or used sales and service.
Automobile new and used.
I thought we allowed to have a service or sales.
You know, automobile new and used is crossed out.
Right, that's what I'm asking about.
Yeah.
Do we not want automobile sales in a C two?
I would want it in a C two, but I'd want it conditional.
Conditional, it is.
So it's.
It is, it's, okay.
It is, is it? No, it's crossed off.
Crossed off.
So reinstate that.
I'll reinstate that, leave it.
I was thinking retail.
Oh, yeah, that's.
But that's.
I think that's specific.
That's one, and that's one retail we want to take a look at.
Should we, okay, should I change?
No, I would just put it in.
Okay, I'll reinstate it.
Reinstate that.
Reinstate it as conditional.
Then batting cages, I think that falls in your amusement, action.
Not only that, I want to know how that difference differs from an indoor driving range.
Driving range for golf.
Well, you just put, you put the bat out.
Because indoor driving.
That's true.
No, no, look, indoor driving range is.
Is in permitted.
I would just take that definition out.
Okay, no, not take it out, I mean, we can.
Okay, I will delete this line.
But a batting cage could easily be indoors.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So why put an indoor batting cage conditional and allow the other as permitted?
Okay.
An indoor golf driving range.
I, I think it, I think it could go up to the same.
Outdoor recreation.
They could go out under the amusement.
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine just taking that out.
If you think it, if you think it toes or those places like that.
What are you doing to this?
I'm deleting it.
No way.
What? Because it'll go up there to amusement.
Okay, but then you're deleting that, but you're keeping the golf driving range in?
Well, it's in, it's in a permitted.
Golf is in a permitted, these are conditional.
My question, Mike, you're not listening to me. Why is this also in permitted?
That's fine, let's put it in permitted, but I would just take it out and it falls under, so could you do golf driving or? I feel like, well, I feel like all.
What I'm saying is, if you're gonna put golf driving range, which we may decide to delete, put or batting cages under permitted. Indoors.
Why it's under conditional is because you have outdoor.
Well, I, I knew that.
You want to see where the site plan was and what's going on.
Which I agree, but, so do we want to put outdoor batting, I'd, I'd put.
I would put it all under the amusement, because that's what's gonna happen is under the amusement.
Well, he has a good point, we have golf driving range.
But then we've got to delete the golf driving range out of permitted.
Yeah, take it out of permitted.
Okay, so.
Under the conditional.
Is that everybody?
I'm fine with that, so I'll delete the golf and driving range, and it'll be implied and permitted. Or in, in conditional.
Conditional, and this will be, be considered, it'll be cannibalized too.
Right.
Then bed and breakfast, hotel and in, let's just do bed and breakfast. As a conditional. I don't know why it's hotel and in.
I, I agree.
So delete bed and breakfast in?
Just, just bed and breakfast, period.
I guess better keep both.
That's why I do bed and breakfast.
Doesn't matter whether it's in or out.
I've never seen a bed and breakfast hotel, so I don't.
Usually that's a vending machine down the hall.
It was supposed to be splashed, but.
No, I just do bed.
Okay, bed and breakfast in is, there, fix it, I know.
Church, what, what's this rental location temporary revival? What's all that about?
That's for your Southern Baptist.
Where are you?
Down the list of ways.
Carpenter Cabinet Shop.
We're in the, we're in the west.
You want to come out and do a, come out and do a revival out of the field. So they set up a.
Revival.
I think that should be just under a temporary business license.
Just church.
This is. Okay, but this, no.
Can we not make a church conditional?
It's something that handled through business licenses, what they.
I didn't think that we, I didn't think we could allow a church, I didn't think we could choose where churches go anyways.
This is, this is what.
Oh, they are conditional.
But what it says here is rental.
Or temporary revival.
I would just take, take it out and do just church.
I'll just leave in the church and take our rental, because if it's temporary, it goes as a business license to the city council, it doesn't even involve us.
But his reason for putting this.
I understand it because it's been somewhere else. Okay, dance hall, okay, we got five minutes.
Temporary revival though?
Dance hall.
Yeah, because they just come in in the tents, like a tent.
Yeah, dance hall, yeah, that probably needs to be conditional, because then that's where we deal with parking.
Daycare preschool was obvious, event center.
Yes.
Go kart track.
Why don't you do dan, like event slash dance, oh, never mind, event center's fine.
Now, go kart track indoors, couldn't we put that under the fund centers? Okay, so this will be deleted.
What? Event center?
No, no, go kart track indoors.
I don't even have that, oh, oh, okay. Wait, hold on, we missed right over fuel stations, because that's where I think fuel stations need to come back in.
Ind conditional, yeah.
Because you have diesel, gas.
And just do fuel service station.
Okay.
Don't worry about vehicles under or vehicles above.
So reinstate that, because it's deleted right now.
Yeah, because that would, yeah, that would mean that it wouldn't be allowed in a C two.
Right.
Okay, I'm changing it to say fuel service station, yeah, okay.
But again, it falls under retail.
Golf course.
But that one I would list separately because you're dealing with underground. I agree.
Is there a reason we're specifying indoor go kart track?
Well, we're taking that anyway.
I deleted that, and it's gonna be considered under the fund centers.
Same as why do we care if a golf course is conditional?
That's, that's a good use of.
I would, yeah, because a lot of times that's a budding residential zone, there's a lot of, yeah.
Okay, indoor gun range, be okay with that?
That's weird, no, that's weird, because it's in permitted uses above, wasn't it?
No.
No, that was archery, that was archery.
Well, my bad.
Hospital, medical, dental, now, we had that already on something else.
That's my whole thing, why is that listed under permitted in one place? Clinics are permitted, but hospital, medical, dental, and health services is conditional.
What if we just delete that?
I don't understand.
But it's still a clinic, it's still.
And dental is, this is lists also, dentures, health services.
Why don't we just scratch everything except for hospital?
I'd say I'd just keep hospital.
Keep hospital.
Yeah.
And then scratch everything.
That, I agree with.
Perfect, let's do it. Hold on, we missed heavy equipment rental sales and services, I guess we're just considering those are M ones.
Heavy equipment, I agree with that.
Hotel.
Well, I guess your, your contractor, your, like, non-typical.
You have your small, like your slim, whatever place that is down here, that would be a C two, but small.
Yeah, but they, I mean. It's still heavy equipment.
Yeah, that's definitely a M one.
Who's determining that?
I think you have to leave it as conditional.
I have to add it to.
I would leave that as conditional too.
Leave that as conditional, okay. Okay, and delete.
Hotel is fine.
Well, I would put motel, motel slash hotel.
But we already have that under bed and breakfast.
No, that's different.
Forgive me, I was.
Bed and breakfast is very specific.
I understand that, I was thinking of something different.
But you deleted.
What matters is a bed and breakfast would never, well, it would never be in a C two.
You deleted motel and kept hotel, I would put motel slash hotel.
Can't, okay, but can't we? Okay.
The whole point of bed and breakfast is it's in a usually.
If this is a conditional use zone, why can't we just put hotel, bed and breakfast, and so forth on the same line and delete the other?
Put motel on that line too, though.
Motel slash motel slash bed and breakfast.
Okay, and I'm deleting.
Nice, nice consolidation.
Or not hostel, do we need to put hostel?
Don't ever stay at those.
You've been there? You've been to one of them?
One in Jackson Hole.
Another one, you still on that same page?
Which one?
Yeah.
I would delete nursing care facility because that's mandated. That's, that's a permitted use.
Go back quickly to kennels, I don't think it matters. It's below kennels, I don't know that it matters indoor with outdoor exercise area, just kennel in general.
Nursing care facility is right here, oh, oh, is it in here still?
Okay. So on kennel, they're deleting the stuff in.
Kennel, delete it in, okay.
And I would delete nursing care facility because that's a permitted use, so.
Okay.
We put that as conditional.
Control and examination, delete.
Okay, pest control. Okay, public, quasi-public uses.
Gun sales, though, gun sales and services, that crossed out because it's permitted or?
Retail, okay, public and quasi-public uses, just exactly what is that?
I think government or.
We're in one.
We're in one right now.
Okay.
Care that that, well, I guess.
You better keep, I would keep that one in.
Okay, what?
Like a well or a pump station.
That's true, you're right, I see that, okay. Okay, we got three minutes, radio, television, recreation centers.
I don't know why recreation center is all of a sudden conditional, and we have athletic facilities in permitted.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll delete that altogether.
But a recreation center can also be an amusement center, because you're recreating that.
Well.
That's very vague.
It is very vague.
Yeah, okay.
We still have to hum over the amusement situation, so let's move back.
Okay, we'll, we'll hit, I'll change these and then we'll go over it again. Okay, telecommunications tower, we already hit that once, didn't we?
That Mary is eliminated.
Okay, stop, let's backtrack, telecommunications tower.
Yeah, we moved it, we moved it under permitting, and we're leaving again in conditional.
Yeah.
We're leaving this as well, okay, okay, okay. And then trade, okay, veterinary, small animals. That's.
Do you want that in conditional or permitted?
I think it's conditional, I still keep it conditional.
Okay, so.
That, so it probably needs to be specific of small animals and large animals.
Well, that's what it says, smaller, medium animals.
Okay, so I'll remove that deletion line.
There needs to be one in conditional for large animals.
Isn't that what this crossline is, means is?
Means delete it.
Okay, but I'll leave it in there.
This, anyone that you, we haven't said, Keith, your is gone.
So then we need to have a separate line that says large animal.
And I very quickly go over our old list, make sure, because we deleted a whole bunch, I want to make sure we're in agreement. Dry clean was deleted, everybody in agreement with that? Period.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Light indoor manufacturing and associated retail sales, that's been gone, that's not there at all.
So we need to add a component of that.
What I'm saying, understand. Liquors, liquor stores, we deleted that completely. If, if any of these. No, it isn't, I've looked at.
No, yeah.
Public and quasi-public uses, we deleted that.
We deleted what? No, we left that.
Where is it?
It's a conditional.
Did I miss it?
It's a conditional, yeah.
Where is it?
Okay, I, I missed it.
Yeah, it's.
Here's one that we, that's deleted, I didn't see reinstated, warehousing with at least twenty-five percent of the floor space for office use.
That we need to add back in, I think our next discussion needs to include definitions, like the mayor and I have talked to, of flex space and what's warehousing and what's light industrial.
What I've done is, this is our old list, okay, so that one should be put back in.
Well, we need to talk, we need to have a discussion on that one.
We need to, we, we still have to talk about the prohibited uses, we need to talk about the ones that have been deleted from our old list that are not included here.
So let's do this, Lyle is gonna send out a revision of what we talked about thus far, then everyone's gonna read through that and go through the old ordinance, make sure we didn't miss, then we'll have a discussion about the flex space versus warehousing, and we'll finish up prohibited next time. So that's a good stopping point.
I think it is, right here.
No, I think we need, because that's the number one thing we, hold on.
This precipitated this whole thing.
That's the number one reason we sit in this ordinance every time, is because of the flex space, or the office, or the light warehousing, light manufacturing, so we need to come up with a definable. Word and definition for whatever we choose to call it.
Okay.
That's a good stopping point.
Thanks for all you did.
Yeah, that was wonderful.
Next year, let's have this. I already put those up.
Oh. So these sales too?
Oh, oh, oh. Little naked guy here. Next year, seriously, I'll be in better shape.
Oh. I'm like.
You're getting around on my computer.
I'm like, how, how did my computer change so much? What did I do? I'm like, I've never had a green screen, I'm like, something seriously has happened. Oh, gosh.
Somebody hacked it, you need.
I'm like, gosh, what did I accidentally press when I left?
Somebody hacked it just to change your.
I seriously, that.
Lyle. Lyle?
Yes.
Thank you for taking that on.
Oh, you're welcome. So basically, anything that's crossed out, I delete.
Right.
Thanks, Lyle. I need a plug.
Okay, I better turn my phone down, I forget to do that.
Mine starts moving after a while.
Who have I not called on to give the prayer in a while? Lou? Do you want to give the prayer?
Okay.
I'll leave in the pledge. I'll go, hold on, I can go grab her.
There's some of it, I'm gonna try to make that very short.
I know. Believe me, I know.
Got more people here, what are they here for?
Tell me when you're ready. Are you good? So you're ready to go? You're good on your side, Brendan? Oh, okay. Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order, I'm going to lead in the pledge, and Lou is going to give a prayer, would everyone stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being just for all.
Our heavenly Father, we're grateful to meet as a planning commission this evening, we express gratitude for the freedoms we enjoy in this country and the great community in which we live. We'd ask thee to please bless us with wisdom and good judgment, and the decisions we'll make this evening help us to take into consideration the interest of the public and the welfare of our city, and we say this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, next on the agenda, public comment, is there anyone that would like to say something? Seeing none, report from city council. Oh, sorry, sorry, come up.
I need to give this to the recorder first.
Uh, yeah, but state your name and address, and then you can give it to her.
Scott Mormon, and fourteen sixty-five East Main Street in Tremont.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to put in my two cents for the Tesla supercharger.
Oh, okay, so that will be an agenda item, yep, so when they come up, I'll, I'll let you talk, does that sound good? Thank you. Okay, report from city council.
Okay, this is a report from last week, I was not there, so I'm going off the minutes. There was a work session at six thirty with Black Pine Group about the Cottonwood Drive property, it sounds like lots of you guys were there, but they discussed, it looks like the action would, the next action would be another joint work session between planning commission and city council to kind of further discuss the proposal. And then as far as direction for the planning commission, we signed a contract with Mike Hansen, he'll help do the new ordinance on subdivision ordinance. So the mayor said he'd like to have two members of the planning commission on that, on the new housing committee, and then two members for the administrative subdivision committee, so that will be early next year, it looks like. We approved minutes and bills, and then, some of you may have seen, they put out an announcement, I think, today on the recycling, so they. Recycle Earth is not accepting recycling materials right now, so we are just gonna continue collecting the recycling on the normal schedule, but take it to the transfer station until that's open again. We approved a business license for Ace of Shades, which is window tinting, and then we approved the resolution to, for a new employee policy and procedures manual, so. Yeah, that will be a separate policy now, and then the next business item was to remove that ordinance from the code, so now it's a separate, a separate document. And then we approved a new backhoe, instead of a snowplow, and those will be swapped, and then we canceled the December twenty-first city council meeting, and then reported on assignments. Any questions? Thank you, thanks.
Okay, next, a public hearing to consider the approval of the amendments to the M one zone, do we have a motion to enter the public hearing?
Motion, re-enter the public hearing?
Motion by Greg, second by Lou, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in the public hearing, is there anyone that would like to comment on the new amendments to the M one zone? There are none. We can close the public hearing.
Shall we close the public hearing?
Motion by Darren.
Second.
Second by Brandon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on, recommendation to the city council to approve or deny the amendments to the M one zone.
I recommend we approve the amendments to the M one zone, with the caveat of, I think it's fourteen point seven oh C, that we change that verbiage to what was discussed tonight.
Perfect.
Second.
Okay, motion by Greg, second by Lou, does someone have that document?
I do.
Okay, so you'll submit.
And send it to you.
Okay, perfect. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, recommendation to the city council, approval or denial of the site plan for Tesla Inc. for a charging station located at seventeen fifty West, twenty-seven hundred North. I know there was discussion last time, so there is a representative here, will you come up and state your name and address, and go over any questions they might have?
Thanks for having me, my name's Jenny Piter, I'm a design manager for Tesla Inc., I guess corporate headquarters are thirty-five hundred Deer Creek Road, Palo Alto, California.
Last time we had some questions, I, I think Lou had most of the questions, maybe on orientation.
Greg had one, I, I had a question about the placement of the landscaping, that's been explained to me, and now I understand the unique circumstances, so I, I have no concern about that now.
My question was, I was able to talk to the, the power company, and my question was answered as well.
I think the only question we had with Lou was that, we thought that was a road rather than a, just an entrance to the property, so it's not a road, so the landscaping's appropriate where it is.
Normally landscaping is a, is a screen, so, you know, between the public access and the facility, but since that's a private road, it didn't fall into that category, so there's no concern.
I do have one quick question, this is for Tesla only currently, correct?
You may have heard in the news the last year or so, most of the other car manufacturers have agreed to adopt Tesla's charge port. That is our first car company, Ford, and then GM are starting in February of twenty twenty-four. Once they have the charge port and the software to interface with our charging stations, they will actually be open to those vehicles, we're opening up to most of the other car manufacturers in stages, just to make sure, you know, we don't get swamped all at once. These would then be open, we, we wouldn't anticipate being able to construct until maybe the spring, if we get all the approvals, so this would begin to be open to other car manufacturers.
Perfect, so in time, other car manufacturers will be allowed to use this.
We're phasing them in over a year, so we can get everybody up to speed, you know, not have a.
Thank you for answering that question.
You're welcome.
So if you allow other manufacturers, would this be expanded at some point if it gets to be a highly, highly used facility?
Yeah, so the proposal as it is now is to build twelve charging posts immediately or as soon as possible, and then we have built in the, into the plan set, an option to build eight additional posts in the future, so we would be paving and installing the electrical equipment for that eventual expansion, but we would, you know, wait and watch the usage.
And that expansion would, would occur towards the north?
No, so the expansion as it is, all of them are shown on the plan set, it's kind of, it's a little hard to see if you haven't printed it in color, but the charging posts on the left side would be the ones that would happen immediately, and then the ones on the right side, they're kind of in a lighter shade of gray, eight, eight addition, those would be the eight additional.
Are those other two truck and bus?
Are we saying?
Are they, are they for trucks and buses?
The one on the very left side?
Yes.
Yes, that is correct, that is for something like a Cybertruck towing a trailer, or any, any, any vehicle charging a trailer, it's not, they're not big enough, for instance, for like a semi.
Okay.
But somebody who's towing something behind them, that's the idea.
Okay, all right, that makes sense, I was just curious. Okay, all right, that makes sense. I was just curious about that. Thank you.
Sure. Anything else? I think we're good. We'll take the comment.
Thank you.
From the public. Thank you. You can come up now.
First time doing this sort of thing.
You're good. State your name and address again, just in case.
Scott Mormon, fourteen sixty-five East Main Street in Tremont. Uh, just wanted to put my, my two cents in. Uh, I'm in favor for it. It'll bring a lot of traffic, a lot of sales tax, and the, the two additional, uh, ones for pulling a trailer. Most, the vast majority of superchargers don't have those, and that'll be a, a first and definitely first in the area, probably first in Utah. And that'll be fantastic to have. Normally, you'd have to put the trailer off to the side, disconnect and then go charge, but I'm really looking forward to having this in if it gets, gets approved.
Thank you. Okay, anything else on this one? There is none. Do we have a motion?
I move that we recommend to the city council to approve the site plan for Tesla for a charging, a charging station located at seventeen fifty west, twenty-seven hundred north.
I second.
Motion by Lyle, second by Darren. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Moving on next, so not next week, the first weekend, the first Thursday in January, you'll be on city council, same time, seven o'clock. And then, what? The fourth, the fourth of January. Yep, sorry, they don't have a meeting next week, so you're in January. Thank you. Okay, next, set a public hearing for January fourth, oh gosh, I should have read ahead. Twenty twenty-four to consider the request to vacate a public utility easement for Stephen and Charlene Wilson located at twenty-eight eighty west, thirty-three twenty-five north. Is there anyone here to represent them? Do you want to come up and just tell us what you're doing? Here to say your name and address and then give us the spill.
Steve Wilson, it's twenty-eight eighty west, thirty-three twenty-five north. I just want to build a two-car garage out back of my house. And they said there was a easement there. I've contacted everybody. There's nothing back there. I just want to kind of put it next to Ricky's big old shed.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you have all the letters, so.
How far is this going to be from the property line?
Well, I would like it as close as I could get. I know like on Ricky's, he's three feet away from the property line all the way around, and I don't even
Won't allow that now.
So what is it now?
Ten feet minimum.
Ten feet? Well, that's why I thought I'd come in to get easement.
The side setback, isn't it?
Well, it's all around, depending on height.
Well.
I think it's still four and as you go up, you pull in.
For a residential? Residential, I, as I read it, was was, was twenty-four maximum, both sides combined, minimum.
Yeah, that's for your house.
So it doesn't include a garage? Is it, it's not, it's a detached garage? Okay, that's the problem. That's okay. Sorry, I didn't understand that.
So yeah, you're at four.
Starts at four and then for every foot, you go up over a certain height, you go a foot into your property.
But he was, you were thirteen feet, right, on yours?
Yeah, well, I was trying to figure that out, but I didn't know what size garage I can build until I see if it's okay with you guys anyway, you know, so I just kind of lost.
He wants a thirty by thirty by thirteen foot high.
So if you stay under the fourteen, you're at the four feet from, from your setback.
Okay, now what if, because I was talking to the people that's gonna build, build it, and they possibly go on thirty by forty by thirteen tall.
As long, it's all on height, it's not size.
It's all on height? Okay.
So if you go above fourteen, then you have to shrink in and come another foot for every height you add on.
Okay, so. So maybe I could tell them I want to go to fourteen, because what I want is, I'm gonna put a lift in it for my cars. And they just said.
If you wanted to pull in at five feet, you would go fifteen. So it just, every foot you go above fourteen comes in a foot from the set, the setback.
Okay, so if I held it away five feet, I could go fifteen tall. Because five feet won't be that big of a deal for me. I just don't, ten feet, it's in the middle of my yard.
Yeah.
No, I didn't understand it was.
Yeah, I didn't either when I first.
I didn't see any diagram, so I didn't know.
Yeah, so no, yep, you're, you're good.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other questions for him? Thank you. Is there other discussion items or motion?
So I I move that we set a public hearing for January fourth, twenty twenty-four to consider the request to vacate a public easement for Stephen Charlene Wilson located at twenty-eight eighty west, thirty-three twenty-five north.
Okay, motion by Brandon?
I'll second.
Second by Lyle. My only question on this one is, they're on city council agenda for a public hearing. And then do they just go for approval to city council? They don't come back to us?
It's a public case, man.
Okay, so they'll have the public hearing and the final decision for, okay, I think that's what Lindsay might have told me that.
She did.
Okay.
Right. We're setting, we're setting a public hearing for the city council, is what we're doing tonight.
Because for some reason your timeline needed, there was a timeline issue, so we set the public hearing for the city council. Okay, okay, just making sure I'm reading that right. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, on January fourth, you'll go to the city council at seven PM. They'll have the public hearing and then they'll vote on it. Same place, yep. January fourth, yep. Thank you. Okay, set a public hearing for January eleventh, twenty twenty-four to consider the request to the, or request to amend the general plan to allow for the commercial zone at fourteen oh seven north, two thousand west. So this one is, and I'll have him come up and talk in a second, but this falls, and maybe we can pull up the future zone or the zoning map?
Future.
Yeah. For some reason, when we did the overall future map. No. Oh, is that, yeah, yeah, no, yeah, the bills, yeah. When we pull, when we redid our whole future zoning map, this was still residential and we coded it as residential, not residential slash commercial, like we had done the rest of the frontage of two thousand. So they have come in and, and he can come up and talk what he wants to do, but they've asked for a commercial rezone, which means we have to amend the, the general plan to do it, so if you want to come up and state your name and address and what, what you're looking to do with the property. Uh, either.
Okay, so my name's Brad Butterfield and my address is seventeen sixty-one north, two thousand west in Far West, Utah. That's where I practice. I'm just right here kitty corner in one of Sam Knight's buildings. Um, we've outgrown our space. I brought on a second dentist, uh, through COVID. I don't know what's, you guys know better than me, but the population seems to be exploding and we have people just beating down our door to get in. So we're looking to expand and don't really have the room in our current location to do what we need to do. Looking around for option when the bill residents, uh, became available, it's something that's relatively easily converted into a, uh, dental office, and ultimately that's the goal.
You have quite a bit of real estate behind the building. Do you have any plans for that?
No, no.
Is that what your patients do after you subject them to your dental work?
Repaint the barn or something like that, yeah, I don't know. At the time, I, I don't. It's more than I need for my current projects. But, uh, the barn's pretty cool, so maybe we'll have a barn party or two if that.
Well, thank you. Does that make sense to everyone why we're opening it up for?
Yes, and what I would suggest is, uh, if we're gonna consider modifying the general plan, why don't we modify it to include that, those parcels south of there on the east side?
That whole chunk.
Because that was an oversight. I don't, I suspect I know why it happened initially, but I, it was not my intent to separate that out and distinguish it from anything else, so.
And I mean, he experienced last week too. We were even a little confused, like, wait, hold on, it should have been this way, and I think there was just some influence at the time.
So it was really our intent, I think, to have that.
That was my assumption, but.
So Brad, is this the same piece of property you mentioned to me?
It was, yeah, yeah.
So yeah, everything across the street and kitty corner everywhere is.
Everything north of that, on both sides of two thousand west, we've, we've proposed either.
And when we updated it, we specifically did all of that to be future commercial.
Almost an oversight, I think, and I think when we revise the general plan, we ought to just take care, not only of this parcel, but all the parcels south of that on the west side.
I think it was north too mostly, wasn't it?
One north and one south.
I can't remember.
Okay, that's perfect. Does someone want a motion to set a public hearing?
I motion we set a public hearing for January fourth to discuss the
Eleventh, eleventh.
Oh, January eleventh. January eleventh, planning commission, not council, okay, my, sorry. I recommend we, uh, set a public hearing for January eleventh to discuss the, uh, general plan amendments.
Okay, motion by Greg. Second by Darren. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, January eleventh, stay up here for a second, then set a public hearing for January eleventh to consider the rezone request of the Bill Family Trust property located at fourteen oh seven north, two thousand west from A-one to C-two. So in the same respect, is there any other questions for him?
That's what we had envisioned, the potential use for that property, so I don't have any.
Awesome.
I recommend we set a public hearing for January eleventh to discuss the rezone from an A-one to a C-two.
Motion by Greg. Second by Brandon. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, January eleventh.
Thanks, guys. You guys are awesome.
Thank you. Okay, next, set a public hearing for January eleventh to consider the request to amend the general plan to, to allow for the manufacturing zone at sixteen eighty-six west, seventeen twelve, oh, and seventeen twelve west, Far West Drive. So this one is, well, you guys looked at, yeah, the map. Off of, well, it's right next to the Black Pine one that we just did, in the back of the chug property. But I will let, remind me of your name, Steve, come up and kind of explain their intent.
My name is Steve Borup. I work on the development side for a company called Dakota Pacific Real Estate. We're a local developer based out of Salt Lake City, and we develop several different types, but one of the, um, product types that we, uh, work on is industrial. And so we had the opportunity to work with, um, the chugs on this piece of ground and vision what it could be from a development perspective. And we have a desire to see if we can continue, and I, I did, I did bring some, send some slides. Is this the right time to pull up? It's in this file? Is this, is this the right, right time to pull it up, just to give some more? There you go.
Probably that file, go down to the Word document.
It'd be the top one, that Borup chug rezone? Or is that just the application?
So the word is the?
No, yeah, sorry, it's not that.
You got which one?
Well, he's in the packet info.
Far West holder?
Oh, okay, that top, yeah, there you go.
Thank you. We can go to the next slide. So this is the general area, like it was mentioned, it's next to the Black Pine, um, development, just south of Associated Foods. And the red line is the current M-one boundary. It goes up along the Black Pine and then goes up to, um, the Associated Foods, and today in the general plan, this area, the R site plan shows, which is where those orange buildings are, which we'll get a little bit more into, that, um, is zone residential, and the general plan shows it as residential, and so our request is to switch that piece to, uh, M-one. Uh, I'll also say that where that red line goes, just between the Associated Foods and our, our, uh, believe the general plan shows for a future road. Um, where the, the road that Black Pine is gonna bring is gonna continue down on the front of our property, and then the general plan assumes that that's gonna, uh, work its way around and up to the frontage road in front of Associated Foods. And so we're gonna have this road and, um, one side's gonna be industrial, and our proposal is to make both sides of that road industrial and move the line between M-one and residential, you know, to the, to the south of this property. And so the pink would be where the new M-one boundary modification would be. I can go more into site. I'll pause there if there's any questions, though. Like, I, I can cover a little bit more, but we did in the, in the development committee meeting in terms of roads and infrastructure and other things like that, but, uh, a- any questions on the intent?
And this really is just to feel to, see if there's interest to hold a public hearing to move forward with amending the general plan, so as far as site details, things like that, I mean, you can ask him if you need them. Lou?
Well, I would move that we table this, and there's several reasons for this. I'm not even gonna get into the specifics of your proposal. It's been our practice when we make revisions to the general plan that they are preceded by lengthy and thorough discussions by the planning commission, oftentimes in work sessions, sometimes gently jointly with the city council, in which we thoroughly review all possible options. We take in serious consideration the welfare of the citizens of Far West. In this case, we would take into considerations all the residents along Far West Drive. We have not done any of that as a planning commission, and I, it's been our practice that we have engaged in our deliberations and have come up with what we feel is the best option for Far West City, and it's at that point we then have a public hearing and present the results to the public. Since we have not done that as a planning commission, we have not had an, an opportunity to thoroughly review this, looking at the pros and cons. That's the basis for my suggesting that we table it at this time.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Lou, second by Lyle. All in favor? Any opposed? So, let's get you on a work session.
Yeah, it, it, it sounds like, uh, yeah, e- every municipality does things a little different. Appreciate the insight. Certainly not trying to shortcut a process. I think this was the first opportunity to get and present this to planning commission, getting any initial feedback. But we certainly thought a lot about, um, infrastructure and all those kind of things and happy to come work through it. We certainly understand, you know, some of the transition concerns between residential and industrial and working through that can be, it, it, it's just important to, to get everybody aligned on, so.
Well, I will get with Lindsay tomorrow, because I don't know what our January eleventh work session looks like. So let me get with her and then I'll let you know if we can put you on that one probably. So. Okay, thank you. Okay, set a public hearing for January eleventh to consider the request for the rezone of the portion of the chug property from R-one fifteen zone to the M-one manufacturing zone.
Recommend we table that one as well.
Motion by Greg.
I'll second.
Second by Lyle. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, next, consent items. Approval of minutes stated November ninth, twenty twenty-three.
I recommend we approve the, approve the minutes stated.
Okay, motion by Greg. Second by Brandon. All in favor? Okay, next, report on assignments. Brandon?
I updated my hours, so thank you, Jason, for putting that out there for us to be able to update.
Yeah, that is a good reminder that by the end of the year, you have your four hours and one hour counts as meetings. Right? Four, yeah, four total. One is attending the meeting, so you're good, so three hours in the tracker by the end of the month.
And then mayor sent out one that's coming up in January, right?
January fourth.
We could start all over again and get it.
January fourth at noon.
Okay.
Do we have any coming trainings, because?
January four.
Mayor sent out. Before January, because I thought we have to have four hours before the years. Watch, you can watch ones on YouTube, the.
Yeah, you can do any of them online. If you go to the Utah Leagues of Cities, you can do any of their education hours and just track them. It's a very liberal system.
I think there's a land use review and on the third and fourth, too.
Yeah, any of them you can send out to all of us. Lyle?
Yes, okay, I'll be quick. I'll try. I went to a new grant workshop in Logan on the twenty-seventh of, uh, November. Learned all about the, going on for the grant season this next year. Uh, there's money out there. We just got.
Uh, there's money out there. We just got to go after it. And so, and then also um, I learned a lot from there though, because I learned that we can get federal grant money to help pay for our parks or, or playground equipment and so forth. Anyway, and then we also had a park meeting on the twenty-ninth. Uh, and we went over this very thing of what we, what we uh, what we can do and we kind of strategized a little bit. We also met with Tom Berkland, who's our engineer, is working on the, the ADA doc out of the Smith Family Park. And he, um, we went through some of the details on that. And so we're moving forward with that now. It's finally starting to get some, some steam. And also um, I'm working on a, I haven't started the grant yet because I'm trying to get the, the money. But I, or the information. But I've been in contact with Vern Garrett. I think, yeah, his last name is Garrett, from the playground. They're, they're estate contracts, so we don't have to have any other bids. And I'm working with Vern right now, and he's gonna be sending me some. What we want to do is we want to turn this Civic Center Playground right out here outside the door to do one hundred percent ADA uh, sensory type thing. And uh, because we feel, and I think this was the plan long before now, it's just that we have an opportunity. And so what we're gonna, and so I've been talking with Vern, and I guess there were some plans back in twenty, I think twenty twenty. Anyway, he's gonna give me a few plans. I'm gonna set up an appointment with the, the city, the planning commit, sorry. The Parks Committee, so we can go over this and stuff. And anyway, we're, we're working forward with that. And then we also have got the grants that we're gonna work on for the uh, for grant. Because we need funding from both sides in order to cover some of these costs. So anyway, that's where we're at on that. I think that's all I've got.
Okay. Uh, Lou?
Uh, nothing other than what I discussed in our work session.
Okay, Darren?
So North Austin had an open house on that shopping zone, that retail zone that they're planning near Kurt's Drive-In and just had a lot of people there asking questions and stuff, so. It looks like it's a future thing, but it's gonna take a while to, you know, get people in and they're looking for anchors to come in to kind of solidify that. But, and then other than that, I will be gone January. No, actually, I'll be here. I thought I was gonna be gone. I'm gonna be gone January fourth, but I don't need to be here on the whole.
Um, Greg?
First, I want to thank Lyle for taking on the rewrite for the C two.
We, we bombarded him tonight.
Before the new year, or just into the new year.
I appreciate that. I'm gonna start reading the subdivision stuff that you sent out.
Okay.
So.
Did I send that out?
I do, I do have a, a draft of something from, for subdivisions.
Cause I think I'm, okay, maybe I did. Did I?
It's the G L T C, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause we have, well, I'll wait till I get to my section. Okay.
And Jason, I do appreciate the uh, thing you put together. It worked out slick. Once I figured out how to operate it.
Okay, Greg. Jason. On my end, I feel like I have a lot, but I can't think of anything right now, because it's been like a month since we last met.
We had a development meeting, but they were both the same people.
Yeah, same people in the development meeting, your education hours. Um, and as far as the subdivision ordinance, which was technically supposed to be on the work session tonight, we have contracted, like Janelle said, uh, um, Mike Hansen, I believe his name is, who does this for city. So he's gonna give us kind of the template and get us started. We, I, I guess I sent out, I thought I hadn't, but.
You did.
The Harrisville and there was one other city's version.
Oh, I haven't seen that.
Okay. And they had templates, but this guy sounds like he can really square us up pretty fast, so.
What's the deadline on those anyway?
February.
They have to be in effect February.
Yep. So, so that's our big hit hard next month, so.
Was that for both the administrative and the, there's two of them that we.
It's for the subdivision ordinance.
For the sub, it's the land use, whatever it is for subdivision.
We were given, there was another one, can the.
It's all in the subdivision.
Yeah, it's all the subdivision, the committee, subcommittee.
Yeah, it's all.
There's two committees.
There was the land use. It's, yeah, it's the land use authorization.
Yeah, so there's the administrative land use authority, which is now defined to be in the subdivision.
Oh, okay, so they're with, they're embedded each.
Those go together, because that's part of it, because part of the approval process of a residential zone will not go to the city council anymore. It will only go to the, this committee or this uh, land use authority that we're talking about. The land use authority will make the final decision.
For some reason, I thought, I didn't realize they were embedded within each other.
Yeah, it, that is the approver of subdivisions.
Oh, okay, okay, that makes sense.
The sequence of events. Yeah, it is the final approval of this, which I think will work out well, because we kind of start with a group of similar people, right? With Public Works, Planning Commission, and we're gonna wind up with a similar one. So it's kind of like, you know, it's hard for some things to get away and through. So I, I think it's gonna be a good thing. Um, one good thing about it is, I think we all know, it kind of makes sense to let it be administrative, because if in a subdivision, if the roads are correct and the pipes are in the right place and the lots are the right size, what the hell does the city council have to decide? It's either good or it's not, right? And you guys are already gonna have done all of your work and then, you know, the final approvals will come through that group. The housing committee is separate. That's to help us guide through what we need to do in order to hit our date dates in August for our reports every year. So we're gonna be on top of it early, yeah.
And then this one will, in effect, be just one meeting to the planning commission and then it'll go to the committee. So when they come to us, it's gonna be a pretty clean, no, well, basically, yeah, but they aren't coming back again.
Right, the, we, the planning commission reviews the preliminary.
Yep.
Yes.
This committee reviews the final.
Yep. So when they come now for preliminary, it's gonna need to be a little bit cleaner.
All the preliminary is still the same as it is or can be, but the final is not city council. They've taken us out of the.
Well, we're a four-meeting approval process currently.
Yeah.
Lim, prelim.
Part of this.
Final. Now it'll just be a two.
This is to speed up.
We'll only see it once.
This is to speed up that process, but it puts it back on the developer to be prepared. You know, instead of one more thing. And we've never seen that though, have we? Where they have to go do one more thing to straighten it out.
So that's our big ticket item in January. So, and hopefully Mike will help us.
I think he'll have it like eighty, ninety percent there, and then we can put the frosting on, as we like.
The other big thing that is coming, um, that they're ready to kind of gear up, and Liam and I have been going back and forth a little bit, is the mixed use development. We talked about the Peterson, Blacksmith, or, yeah. Um, so that one we need to start getting on. Liam has started to put a template together. So we're gonna need to have some discussions on how we move forward with the template and what, how we design the development agreement, because they can't move forward with rezone or anything until the development agreement is there. So logistically, we gotta figure out what our next steps are there. But they're ready, they called me last week, they're ready to move forward, so. That's, I think, all I have for now. So, um, next motion, adjournment.
I motion we go home.
Motion by Brandon, second by Greg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, have a Merry Christmas, everyone.
Okay, I'm gonna change this. This is the best change.
Do you want to change the accent?
Yes, I'm going to. She'll get the M two.